Meeting. Art?
Yeah, would you rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Art. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
And I would be with approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion by Gina and a second by Art to approve of the consent agenda as it...
Or backwards.
Let's see Gina and Art, Art and Gina. I'll start the roll with Maureen.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
And Brandy.
Aye.
Okay. That will move on to item number two, staff recognition report. Gary, do we have anything tonight, sir?
Yes, your honor, we do, and I'd like to have Evan Timmar, our water and sewer... Water and sewer work manager, have him present it.
Good evening, Evan.
Good evening, Mayor Lambert, city council, city staff, members of the community. My name's Evan Timmar. I'm the Water Reclamation Utility Manager for the city of Moscow. Tonight, I'd like to just provide some brief recognition to one of our reclamation operators, Mark Branscombe. Mark has been with us for just a little over 10 months, and he's been in the industry for a little over 10 years. Mark, on September 15th, will be appointed as the Pacific Northwest Clean Water Association, or PNCWA, the Idaho Regional Director. And the significance of that role is that PNCWA is the preeminent state association dedicated to the education of the water resources fields in the state of Idaho, the state of Oregon, and the state of Washington. And they help with the dissemination of technical information and scientific information, as well as help promote sound, but sound punctual laws and promotion of industry-related standards. So it's a phenomenal organization that Mark's going to be a part of. There's over 1,500 members with a vast array of disciplines, from engineers to educators, government officials, as well as operators, lab analysts, and utility managers alike. And Mark, to get to this point, has been the president of the North Idaho Operator Section, which is a subsection of PNCWA, as well as the vice president for the past four years. So he's done a lot. He has a degree in microbiology, so he has a vast array of knowledge in our industry. And on September 15th, he will assume that role. He won it by a popular vote amongst PNCWA members, and so he will assume that position for three years. And it's just great. It's great to work for a city that allows us to engage and be able to participate and be in these associations. They're wildly important for, you know, for our field in general. And I think it's just, it says a lot about people like Mark who volunteer their time and dedicate their knowledge to help further these associations. So with that, I'd like to thank you guys for your time, and if Mark has anything he'd like to say.
Well, we certainly want to hear from him. After all that that Evan said about you, Mark, we would like to have a few words. What do you think of him? He told us what he thinks he...
That's right. I appreciate it. But yeah, the PNCWA is, it's been a wonderful organization. I've been involved with them since 2013 and doing volunteer work. I've been at a conference chair for them, put a conference on here in Moscow. The mayor's graciously gives us our speeches when we have our conference here in town. And no, it's just a wonderful organization, and it's just, it's good to be part of it, and I appreciate the opportunity for you guys to allow me to continue to serve.
Well, Mark, congratulations on that. And anytime you do volunteer things like that with any organization, it always takes time and effort, but that just makes our organization that much better, not only in the eyes of the public, but the fellow workers that you have, that you work around. So thank you very much for doing that and stepping up to the plate.
Thanks, sir.
Yep. Thanks. Gary, do we have anything else, sir?
No, sir.
With that, we'll move on to number three, mayor's appointments, and I do not have any this evening. Item number four is public comment and mayor's response period, and we let folks get up and talk to us for three minutes, as long as it is nothing on this evening's agenda and/or in front of the board of adjustment and/or planning and zoning. However, with that being said, item number five on this agenda is a public hearing, and people will get a chance to speak on that, as well as item number six, our open container ordinance revisions for the downtown events, and folks will get a chance to speak on that as well, when those appropriate items come up on our agenda. But with that being said, if there's anybody out there that would like to come up and tell us what your name is and let us know what's on your mind.
Hello.
Hello, Dan.
Hey, there. My name is Dan Schoenberg. I am co-owner of Pluse Properties here in Moscow and live outside of town on Cameron I apologize for not getting this in earlier. I think you've got a letter from Pluse Properties in regards to the 2022 budget and some public relations concerns that we're starting to work through ourselves. And rather than go through the letter, I think it's, the letter is self-explanatory. I want to relay an experience that I had as an assistant VP up at the University of Idaho, and it had to do with funding, kind of like we're dealing with here. And internally, from a finance perspective, we, you know, we know the budgets, we know the budget numbers, we know different fund types, capital funds versus general ed funds versus Y account funds, which are revenue funds on the university. So we know the different colors of money. We know that a general ed fund can't mix with a exil refund, so state money can't mix with housing funds that are food service and other things, and we have the same issue here within the city. So we've got all these different colors of money, enterprise funds, proprietary funds, internal service funds. But when it comes to the average student and student family, and I'm going to say now, the citizen in the city of Moscow, most of them don't recognize the color of funds. And they just see the green going out of their pocket into someone else's. And I think, and I think that is the crux of the communication this evening in regards to the budget. We're looking at this, last year to this year, there's going to be about $3.7 million coming from the citizens for basic taxes and services and fees, not counting all the permits and everything else, that are coming from the citizens that, in an amount, $3.7 million is an amount larger than it did last year. That's about $146 on average per person, man, woman, and child in the community. The other unfortunate thing about it is, the first bill they'll get will be the water bill in November 1st, and two weeks after that, we will get the tax bill from the county. And so it's going to compound on itself, and then we're going to compound it after that because we're going to tell our owners in December, here's all the rate increases for the next year to cover the costs. And then in January, we're going to tell all of our tenants, here are all the rent increases for the next year to cover the increased costs. We're in the process of trying to build a communication pattern that we can talk about this in advance, so that we can prepare our owners, our tenants, community members, so there's less surprise. And I'm suggesting that maybe the city might want to consider doing something of that nature too, rather than waiting until after these have hit. And there's a lot of things in here that are outside of your control, but it doesn't change the fact for the average person that they just see the green going from them to someplace else. It doesn't matter, we can explain all we want, the kind of fund it is, and it doesn't make a difference. And so I think our communication going forward is going to be critically important. My plan would be, once we develop something, we'll bring it to the city and say, are we right, are we wrong, what are the facts, before we ever send anything out. But just like we did with the recycling program, when we had the problem with contamination, and there was a real heavy advertising program associated to that, I'm suggesting we might want to do something in this vein with the collections that are going to occur next year. So, thank you.
Okay, well, I guess I'll go ahead and move on to item number five, which will be a public hearing on the proposed FY 2022 fee resolution. Gary Reeder, you have the podium, sir.
I appreciate Dan's comments. I think more information people have about where the city's money comes from and where it goes is better for everyone, so we'll certainly take that under advisement. And we do try to...
Clearly, with community engagement.
Exactly.
It's always a big thing for us, so...
So tonight is, again, color of some of those funds that Dan was talking about. I don't have a huge PowerPoint presentation. You've gotten in front of you the fee resolution, and I want to talk about process a little bit, because Dan sent an email around today that tried to answer some of his questions about particular changes, and just wanted to share with the council and the public the process that we go through when we look at these things. For instance, one of the things, the comments that came up were some of the increases for, in fact, if I can find it here, I can put, I think, something up on the screen which may help us a little bit. Bear with me just a second. This particular one is one that we used in community development. And of course, we've restructured the community development and engineering are now in the same group. So as you can see, we've got permit issuance costs, so those are listed up there, what the real cost of issuing permits are, and that's just the issuance part of it. Then the publication and notice, so some of these permits require publication in the local newspaper. And then we have staff time affiliated with it as well. So if you have, for instance, conditional use permit, it takes about 12 hours of staff time, and that includes the planner, it includes administrative assistants, whoever, to deal with that. Then we build into their escalators to get us to where we need to be to be able to offset those actual costs. So as you can see, we started in 2015, and in FY 2015, this was the budgeted amount in the budget, and this was the rounded. We tend to leave our permits at a rounded amount, rather than have a bunch of cents rolling around. So it just, you can just see it move up and what the increases are to try and get to getting the actual costs set off, or offset, excuse me. I've got to figure out how to scroll down on this thing. Okay, there we go. This is the one that I think is even more illustrative, mainly because it's newer. I just couldn't fit it all in one spreadsheet. And again, these are those costs we talked about, publication, issuance, direct staff time, and then we started talking about, okay, how far are we off from being able to offset the actual costs of these? And these are permits for, as you can see, planned unit development, preliminary plat's, final plat's, minor amendments, things like that. This is a smattering of them. So as you can see, this is, if these proposals had moved forward, there would be these amount of deficits for each of these permits. So we bring those to council, put a plan together, bring those forward, and that's explained in the budget process. And then we talk about, okay, what actual fees were being generated or are being charged. So as you look in fiscal year 19 for conditional use permits, it was $475. We proposed that it go up to $500 in FY 20, and the 21 fee, because of COVID, we essentially froze fees, for the most part. If you'll recall, most fees were frozen, except for the water fund, which, because of the conservation aspect of that, and the increased cost of well number 10 and the four booster stations. So the proposed fiscal year '22 is, I can't read that from here.
Five twenty-five.
Five twenty-five. So, and that same process is employed for all of these and throughout the budget. So you may see some fees that increase by 5% to keep pace with inflation. You may see fees that are increased for a certain reason. If you look at the general facilities charges, there was a change in the way those were calculated. There were some sewer charges that were also changed specifically for apartments. They were to get more in line with how water is charged. So there's some restructured fees throughout here as well. One of Dan's questions, I think, which I just want to bring up, the, on page one of the resolution, subsection I, commercial site plan review for multiple family, going from $85 to $130. I think you all got my email back to Dan. That would have been, it was $210 the year before. When we consolidated the departments, then those fees were supposed to be combined, and actually calculations had been done. The $115 community development part of that permit fee actually mistakenly got deleted. So it was, in fact, $85 for one year. So we went back, recalculated, and came up with the $130 to come back. So actually, it's $80 less than it was the last time the full fee was charged. And that's because of that consolidation and more efficiency, less time spent on the permit, that sort of thing. So with that, usually in the presentation, we talk about, mostly spend answering questions, talk about the process, and then answer any questions the council might have. So again, the Idaho code requires that if there are any fees that increase, any new fees or fees that increase 5% or more, you have to have a public hearing on it. We typically have a public hearing every year anyway. Idaho code also requires that the amount of money the city charges for fees is reasonably related to the service that is provided, the cost of providing that services, which is one of the reasons we went through this process. One other thing on the GFC fees, you'll recall that there was a lawsuit up in city of Hayden, and we recalculated, did a study as to where our facilities charges fell in with the formula that the Idaho Supreme Court said was the one that we should be using. We're seriously underfunding in GFCs, and we came to council when we first started this process, said this is what the Supreme Court's calculation would allow, it would have been quite an increase. So we presented the council with a 10-year implementation, so trying to, trying to reduce the shock of just recovering everything at once. And we've done that throughout a lot of these, during the budget process, we talked about the sanitation fund, for instance, where as we're continuing, we're doing a new rate study, want to make sure we aren't overcharging for services, but one of the big pieces of that rate study had to do with, or the initial rate study, or the latest rate study, had to do with what were we going to do with the recycling center. Recycling was up in the air. We essentially made presentations and did some surveys and decided to wait. So until a decision is made to move forward in the sanitation fund, there are no increases in fees. And that is the type of process that we go through for all of these. Staff doesn't like to increase fees any more than anybody else. People tend to not like increased fees or taxes, and that's, understand why. So we try to be as diligent as we can. With that, I'd certainly stand for any questions.
Well, I'm going to bring up a point, Gary, before we turn this over to council, because one of the new fees is a stormwater fee, which is 1.251 million bucks. That is a fee that we are forced to do by the EPA, ladies and gentlemen. We've been talking about this for two years, and last year, we were going to implement it until the COVID thing happened, and we delayed it for a year. And so there's 3.7 million that Dan had brought up, and rightfully so. That's part of that, and that fee would have been something that would have happened last year, under normal circumstances. And the property relief thing from the governor was 1.6 million as well, and that was a break that we gave that came from the state, which we felt that was something that our citizens needed, of course, and why wouldn't we do that? We also knew at the time, when we brought it back and went back up the other way, that we'd take it on the chin for it, like we really exonerated this thing, moved it up, escalated, and that ends up being 2.9 million of those 3.7 million dollars. So that's an important thing to recognize as well. By the way, the stormwater fees is, I absolutely don't like it. Just don't like it. By God, we got to do it. We don't have a choice on it, and we've got to implement it, and we've got to do it within four years, or else the fines are going to cost the citizens way more than this fee's going to cost them. And so we're moving forward with that, folks. But with that, Gary, I'll turn it over to council, ask you questions before I open the public hearing.
Yeah, if I may, for, you've struck my memory a little bit on the stormwater fee. We've talked about that so much over the last six months that I forgot to mention that. But that was also another area where we delayed implementation, but also, you'll recall that fee, when we first started talking about it, was over $12, then it was down to $9 when we mapped out, did the rate study, mapped out what we needed to do to comply with the permit. There were some things that were done. We communicated with the EPA, want to make sure we're still moving forward, but cut it back drastically. The capital program, for instance, is significantly less than what it was when we started, and those are the things that we're going to have to do. We'll spend the first four years of this permit cleaning, assessing, and repairing what we can, but it'll take that long to fully assess what our capital program needs to be.
And by the way, that fee, ladies and gentlemen, can only be used for that was dictated to us by the EPA, nothing else other than that. Brandy, you had a question?
Um, weren't they, weren't they able to actually bring it down even farther from that nine to seven or something?
Yes, yes.
Seven ninety-two.
$7.92 per equivalent service unit, and that is, that's, I'd hoped I'd made myself clear, that we came down even further from the $9, which we thought would not be quite as robust as we'd like to make it, but we were able to make additional cuts and delay additional projects in order to meet the mandates of the permit, but still get as reasonable a rate as we could.
Maureen.
I want to ask a question that we received an email on today. Someone was commenting that if we allowed more growth in terms of home building and housing building, that these fees would be lower. Is that, is that accurate?
No, that's, that is not accurate in any way. Number one, our growth rate has, for the last 10 years, has averaged less than 1%. So even though houses are more expensive and that sort of thing, it's not because of growth. Residential development typically, because you have things like the homeowner's exemption, you don't generate the full value of taxes off a residential property. So yet residential properties have services just like commercial properties. Commercial properties don't have that same exemption. So your police patrols, all of those things, providing lots of services to the residences, roads, that sort of thing, they are using those services 24/7. So residential property typically, one of the first things you learn when you go to city manager's school is that residential development does not pay for the services that it consumes. Now, there are exceptions, and those exceptions are if you have extremely high growth. Meridian is a great example of that, has grown over 100,000 people in the last couple of decades. So, but you can become dependent upon that growth, and growth, unbridled growth like that brings its own issues as well, because you end up outgrowing your infrastructure. And you tend to put more money into that, meeting that demand, so some of your infrastructure from earlier times gets put on the back burner, you end up in a situation perhaps like Lewiston is, where you haven't kept up. So a lot of that, and as I said, I know the council doesn't like raising water fees and sewer fees any more than any other fee, but when you get a bill at the end of the day, for instance, well number 10 or the booster stations, that just because of the cost of construction, the cost has outstripped within just a couple of years, went up almost double on those projects, and they're still necessary projects.
And one more.
All of questions?
Yeah, one other question, and this is, it kind of combines this issue with the next one in terms of an entertainment district. And so I was just looking at the page 15 of 27 on the alcohol licensing, and part of what happens is, is there's two ways to have to pay for your beer, there's three ways, but the second one doesn't apply. You know, it says on the premises and no consumption on the premises. So if someone was going to just grab a beer, how do you know, on what category would someone, like a bar, have to pick in order to have a license?
Well...
I mean, because there's nothing there that says you can buy it here, hang out for a while, and walk down the street with your beer.
But it's being sold by someone who has an alcohol dispensing permit.
Right. And what happened is, is I was just trying to figure out, you know, you don't even have to answer it to me now, you can do it another time, but under there, it gives you two choices, drought bottle, draft bottle and/or canned beer, consumption on premises versus bottled and/or canned beer with no consumption on premises. I mean, I mean, like, do you just get one, I mean, like, if you're owner of a bar, what do you do?
So those are based on the state fees. The drought bottle and canned on premise means they have to open it and have it in the bar.
That's it. That's all I needed to know.
The off-premise is for the grocery stores. That's why there's no drought.
Okay, that was it. I was just kind of curious on, where do you fit in, and if the people get to walk around, what do you do then? I got it perfectly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Boy, you just got it on top of me.
Same with wine.
Great, okay. Thank you all.
Any other questions before I open the public hearing?
This order, I would have known.
Hey, Gary, we're going to open the public hearing at 7:27. Please come up and let us know. You've got three minutes. Give us your name and your address, and what you think about our fee resolution in front
Victoria Seaver, Moscow. Well, I have these notes, and I have these notes, and you two guys just said them all. So now I'll say something else. So the city is about providing services, by and large. Services cost money, and costs usually go up for inflation and for no other reason. It's fact of life. Sometimes we seem to look at the city and think that's not the case, but it is. And if you come to meetings like I do all the time, you see the process all year long. You don't just see it at the end, when we have new fees coming forward and new budgets coming forward, and I see the process, and I see it happening. So I don't have an issue. I'm, you know, I'm just a resident, I'm not rich, so my fee isn't going to be huge. There are people here who have bigger numbers to worry about, you're probably going to hear about it. And this, the new one, the stormwater fee, is federally required. You do not want to be paying $150,000 per day for not being in compliance. That's not the way to go. And we care about our water, we're worried about our water, and we have to take care of it. So that's that. What I really want to point out is how much I see through the year, staff go the extra five miles to keep costs down and find ways to get things done efficiently, like going from 12-plus dollars to 9-plus dollars. They could have stopped there. They got it down to $7.92 for the stormwater, and we didn't need to raise solid... And we didn't need to raise solid waste, so we didn't. So, I really have a lot of trust and faith, based on experience of what I see and their work, of what staff does. They're dedicated, and they do a great job. And that needs to be brought out, not just everything costs more. So, kudos to the staff and you guys follow through. So, thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Come on up, Dan. You know, one of the things they said, ladies and gentlemen, is community engagement. We need community engagement so we can talk through these things and everybody gets a chance to talk. And, and actually, I have no problem listening to Dan speak. We talked numerous times, Dan, so go ahead. Oh, we need your name and address, by the way. Even though I know who you are.
Dan Schoenberg, co-owner of Pluse Properties here in Moscow. Live on Cameron Road outside of town. The, I guess, in terms of direct testimony on the fee portion, there's in the email that I sent earlier today. Loved the answers, helped explain what was going on. I actually read these resolutions and budgets. I go through them every page, every line. You know, it should put me to sleep, but I think it creates insomnia. I just have to say that. The one item I'd like to address is the deposit for water, sewer, garbage. And I know that the staff looked at that, and they determined that it was an adequate level. From a owner, property management perspective, I don't believe that it is at a proper level, because we have to deal with the aftermath of not enough funds if water, sewer, garbage isn't paid. Because then it reverts back to the owner, and we try to take it out of the tenant deposit. I can tell you that probably, and I'm guessing right here, I don't have actual numbers, but more than likely, 70% of tenants who move out haven't paid their last month. So, that means we collect the bill from the city, we pay the bill out of the deposit. And if there are other charges within the deposit beyond normal carpet cleaning and things like that, that consume the deposit, then we're left with pursuing the tenant for those funds. And I can't tell you the number, number of bills that I do pay, once we've applied the $100, number of bills I do pay on behalf of tenants that are $20 to $30 in nature. And so, we send a check to the, to the city after, after I've got with Sherry. And, and so, we do the whole process. So, it, it may be adequate from a city perspective. From a property manager, owner perspective, I don't believe it is adequate. And it should be the average water, sewer, garbage bill in the city, so that it provides a proper amount of protection for the last month not being paid by, by a tenant.
Do you have a number?
Well, if it were today, before we do the increases, it would be $120. That's the average bill in the city for a standard service at a duplex or a house, or things of that nature. Next year, we're gonna have the 792 on top of that, plus the 5% and 2.5% of the, the water and sewer charges. So, I haven't done the calculation, but it's probably gonna be 30 to, 130 to 135 dollars for an average bill. And, Maureen, I appreciate your comments on the, the tax relief by the governor and on the storm water fee. What I'm suggesting in the memo that I delivered is, we're a small group here. And my guess is, there's not a huge audience online watching this. And we're dealing with a pub, public relations problem. The fees are all decided, and we need to be able to communicate to the larger community who doesn't follow the meetings, who doesn't, you know. There's gonna be a large group who are just coming back to the community, who are students and renters that have no idea why their, why their rents are gonna go up in magnitude that they're gonna go up. And by getting out in advance of that, we have an opportunity to discuss with them. And so, they have a knowledge base before they get that sticker shock, either in November or December for owners for taxes, or next year.
Yep, that's a good point.
Is there a chance that I can ask him a question?
Well, if he's done talking, sure.
I'm gonna use that part of your three minutes to go to your first issue.
Well, we went, we went.
He cut me off at three minutes here, so we're good.
Yeah, actually, it's 3:47, but I'm gonna ask you a question. It took 30 seconds, so you've done real well, Dan. So, go ahead and ask Dan quick.
So, it seems to me that based on Art's question, you knew that it's like between $130, $135 a month. So, if you know that ahead of time, can't you put that into your rental agreement? That somehow you know that you'll get paid for it? I mean, we've already gone through that issue in terms of who's responsible for it. So, I'm not sure what you're asking for, for us to do, because you know right now what that last month fee should be. Am I mistaken?
Except, I do not set the deposit amount on behalf of the city that's collected by the city for that bill. That, that, I, I don't have the authority to do that. The $100 that's there now has been there for years.
Yeah, several years.
Several years, and it's never increased, although the cost of those services have increased.
That's actually a good point.
Okay, um, thank you.
Wait, I have a question for Dan as well. So, when, just thinking about the communication and getting the word out so people are understanding, when there was that $1.6 million, one-year tax relief, was that communicated to owners and renters? And did then their rents go down in response to that?
Rents did not go up, I'll put it that way. There was, so, the year that this tax piece happened, there was a very large multifamily reassessment. So, all the numbers in multifamily went up. So, if you're, if you had a property valued at a million dollars, likely, your assessment went up to 1.25 to 1.3 million dollars. I mean, that was the magnitude. So, what the, what the tax reduction did is allowed the owners not, not to pass on a cost, because their taxes, even though they got a break, their taxes were about what they were before, in a lot of cases. Not in all cases, but in a lot of cases.
I think that that's an important part of the story, explaining while your taxes actually went down last year, your rents did not go down because of the increase in valuation. And this year, they will be going up, because you don't have that tax relief, and valuation has still gone up. So, it's kind of this, I think.
It's a, it's a two-sided conversation.
Right, so I think that has to, I think that that should be a part of helping people to understand why such a big jump, because of this one, one-time year where they didn't see a reduction, even though those taxes went down. And it's the same thing that we're all struggling with now, that we don't have a lot of control over, is that assessed valuation, even though our, you know, tax rate is actually lower than it was two years ago. And I think that's part of the story, too. You may be paying higher taxes when we talk about the actual dollars in your demonstration.
Yeah, and for most of the tenants and the owners, especially if water, sewer, garbage was included in the, in the rent, most of our rent rates last year went up by the value of the change in, in water bills, because that, that was where the, that was where the increase happened last year. So, most of them were seeing a $5, $7 increase. On some of the assessments that were beyond the tax break, there was some tax change on that, too. Just so that the owners, in most cases, I'll say that, in most cases, were able to recover. You know, the other thing we attempt to do and to minimize that is for continuing tenants, we tend to, when there's increases, we tend to off, try to offer a lower rate increase if you're gonna stay, versus the new tenants coming in. And here's the new base market rate for new tenants. You know, we value those tenants, we value that they're there. And then, so we have to blend those rates. You know, you, you blend things here, too. We have to blend those rates to kind of balance that out, but take care of our existing clientele and have, have two different rates, one for new and, and one for continuing.
I suspect that many renters and even property owners may not know about this $1.6 million. And if they did, they would think, why did our rents go up? So, that has to be a part of what.
It does, it has to be part of the communication. My owners know. They know exactly the amount of the break.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
I seen a gentleman back over here, wanted to get up, too. Come on up, sir, please.
I feel guilty coming up after.
Oh, well, don't feel guilty about that. Everybody has something to add.
Hi, Ken Grubbs, and I live at 1208 North Mountain View Road in the Impact Area, just outside of town. And last time you guys heard from me was when we were talking about the zoning for the Logos property out past Mountain View Park, because I'm right along that stretch. Since then, I was an IT guy at the university. I was one of the four lucky people that got laid off last summer. So, had to retire early and on social security now. And so, able to make it, pay my bills on social security. But I just wanted to let the council know, and as you talk with your Leita County counterparts, for example, my taxes for the house are more than one month social security check. And when I moved here, my 2011 tax bill was 2310, 2,310. My 2020 bill was $3,098, and that's a 34% increase. During that time, when I worked for the university, I took a third pay cut to come here, my pay increase over 10 years was 11.25%. Okay? Also during that, so that was 1.12% per year. And so, when I hear the city council talking about raising fees 5%, I'm wondering, well, in the job that I had with one of the local businesses, we just had to suck it up and get the job done. When I got cut, our group couldn't afford to have the position cut. Those people had to suck it up and get the job done. So, they're, you know, and they're not getting pay increases, you know, to amount to anything. Now, also, to eat out when I moved here in 2010 is about eight bucks to eat at a nice Asian restaurant, for example. And back a year ago March, last time I ate at Thai over in Pullman, it was about $13. And now, at the local Thai place here in Moscow, it's $19. So, that was an increase of 62.5% and then 46%. So, literally, the cost of eating out has doubled in the last 10 years. And that's with an 11.25% pay increase and a 34% property increase. So, even though a 5% increase in one year is not that big a deal, see, I'm, to me, it sounds perfectly reasonable. All the explanations, I don't have any problem with the explanations. But I'm sure I'm not the only one in this situation. And for example, my son, who's a local drum instructor, New England Conservatory graduate, plays extra with the Spokane Symphony, he doesn't have a place to teach because of a business closing downtown. Let the reader understand. And, but like, if we erect something on our property that's soundproofed, that he can teach out of, he still can't raise prices. So, because he'll price himself out of the market. So, I would just like the council to keep in mind that there are many of us, someone young in his situation, that has that type of job, someone that's on a fixed income, even though I'm getting a pension starting next month, it doubles my income. If we go into 10% inflation, which it looks like nationally, that may be even what we're having now, in 10 years, I won't be able to pay my bills after that, if my bills keep going up. So, and I've got other, I have other options. I'm not optionless. But there's probably other people who aren't as resourceful than I am. And that, that's the reality of the situation. So, that's probably my three minutes. But I just wanted to express that point of view, because I think it's applicable, not just for me.
Thank you, Ken, yeah, it is very applicable.
Thank you.
You're, you're welcome. And, you know, the story that you had just said about your own personal situation is no different than what it is for a lot of folks. I mean, do we have inflation? Absolutely. I mean, holy smokes, there's no doubt about it. And so, it's not easy, absolutely not easy. Who else would like to come up and speak? That'll close the public hearing at 7:44. And I will say, one of the, one of the tough things when you have fees, any kind of a fee, and I've never known a fee to ever go down in my life, that I, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's just one of those things, and it doesn't really matter whether it's a fee or a tax, or a cost is a cost. And that's just how it is. And sometimes it's, sometimes it's unfortunate, sometimes it's suffering, and other times. But right now, it, it's gonna be one of those situations, I think, for everybody to, looking forward, because, boy, there is a lot of money in this country being spent on a lot of things, and it's driving some of this absolutely through the roof. With that, Gary, I'll turn it over to council here. Questions for council?
Fees are paid for services received in appropriate amounts of the person receiving those services. So, for a lot of people, a lot of the engineering and construction and other aspects of the fee resolution have no pertinence at all. It goes to the person who's receiving the services. And if it's an engineering or an inspection thing for part of new construction, the homeowner who's buying that house is essentially paying for those services. The builder sure is, and he rolls it back on to the guy who's gonna buy the house. So, for a lot of this, it's invisible to people who are already established. They don't really get to see it. My other comment here is that Dan's thoughts on the water, sewer, garbage fees are pertinent, because I have noticed that mine are just averaging right about there. And so, rather than have the big economic shuffle go on, perhaps we should consider right here, as part of all this, just bumping the connection fee up to 135. If the bill is paid, they get that money back with their deposit at the end. If it's not paid, then it doesn't off the responsibility onto the property management folks.
Yeah, and if I can give you the benefit, when staff, we looked at it, and the determination was, our calculations were a little bit different on average bills, but it was somewhere around the $120 range. And at that point, as you know, I've talked about being reticent to raise fees unless you need to. And again, deposits is one of those things that come out of the pocket of someone. And if you pay your bill every month, somebody just hangs on to $100 that belongs to you, you don't get it till the end. It's a surety, that's the purpose of it. So, looking at the relatively small disparity between an average bill and the $100 deposit, and knowing it was going to affect everybody who hooked up, wanted to make sure that it was not the city overreaching. And when the city, those responsibilities were on the tenant, and the city was having to chase the tenant in order to get those unpaid fees paid. Dan's exactly right. We weren't looking at it from the perspective of, okay, now, has it switched? We were looking at it as, was it something necessary to take that money out of somebody's pocket and leave it somewhere until they actually move out? So, if the council wants to increase that to $125 or $130, that certainly, we're just holding that money. So, it's gonna go back out one way or the other. So, certainly, we're just trying to reduce the impact. But we could certainly move it to that, if that's your desire.
Well, I now can add one more meeting to the list of the meetings I hate for the council meeting. First of all, is the divvying up who gets what commissions, because we turn into crazy competitive people. And this one. I, I, this is when it all becomes pretty real. And Mr. Grubbs, Jim is your name, correct?
Ken.
Ken, I wrote down Jim. I am, I am appreciative of your perspective that you brought tonight to help us kind of understand. I mean, we get kind of used to that, what, level of stress, and we don't realize that 10 years ago, it did cost X amount of dollars to eat out, and now, it's double that. Or, you know, it was just a, I appreciated it. I, I agree with Brandy that it costs money to provide services. And I've watched our staff twist themselves around in. staff twist themselves around in circles and do with zero, or as minimal as they can in the process. And I do think that the increases we take, we take it, you know, we don't want to, but if we want to keep continuing to give the service and the level of service that we do, we have to. I agree that we need to increase the deposit amount. Dan, thank you for bringing that up to us. I do think that there, we do, whether or not we hold it for a little while, it's still an important thing to make sure that we don't impact a business unfairly. And I would agree wholeheartedly that from the beginning, and I worried about this when we first talked about the 1.6 from the governor, I said we're gonna have a problem with this PR-wise. And I think I was the only one in the room that wasn't thinking this was a good deal. But it's a problem, and we need to, I'd like to, I'd like to help get the word out about how we're gonna handle this, or at least be on the team to help talk about it, because this is, and remains, and will remain a problem of ours for the foreseeable future.
I want to comment on that 1.6 million dollars you talked about, Gina, because I clearly was all in favor of it, and I knew we'd take it on the chin this year, but I thought it was the right thing to do for our citizens. Because it's kind of a double whammy, it's a double-edged sword, the next, you know, I mean, because if you get back to it and add to that, all of a sudden, it looks like you've just went right through the roof. And with escalating property prices, and to Brandy's point on the tax exemption, just exacerbated it even more. So with that being said, yes, I just wanted to make that statement, because I still think it was the right thing what this council did last year. Sandra, do you have something?
Sure, and you. Thank you. Thanks to everyone, our folks in the audience who have shared their thoughts and concerns and for the council. And I have to just reiterate that, you know, we live in the town too, and it is sticker shock, I'm not gonna lie, right? And it, it's sometimes a shot to the gut, and it's hard, because, you know, everyone in here makes a different amount, and I can say I don't make a whole lot, right? And so when, every little penny counts, and it can be the difference of going out to dinner or maybe having leftovers for a few days. I mean, I don't, we don't go out a lot, we go out some, right? And I think we can relate this, this increase the same way. It's hard. I, like the mayor, I am grateful for that 1.6 we got last year, knowing darn well we take it on the chin this year. But last year, we took it on the chin so hard in so many ways, that I'm okay. I mean, I hate what it looks like, I hate that it's hard this year, but man, we needed a little help last year, so I am glad that we did that. It's tough, it's hard looking at the amount here, but I also have to say, I'm so impressed with our staff and how they do twist. I think it was Gina that said twists in the wind. Every time we come up and they're bringing something to us, they work diligently to go through, because they live here too, for the most part, right? And, and they know how hard this is, and they don't want to put a lot of extra on our people, or on themselves, or on their families, or on their friends. And we're the same way, but on the other side of that, we do have to provide services, and good services, right? We don't want to just get by, we want to provide the best that we can with what we have. And I believe our staff sees that every single day, and they work on it every single day. And I know that we try to work on that every single day also. And so, yeah, I, it is hard, and you can't get around that, but that's where we're at.
Brandy?
I would just go back to the stormwater fees also. We've been talking a lot about the importance of us working a little harder to help people to understand this 1.6 million, but there also, just getting that word out too, these stormwater fees were planned for last year. So these two things piled on together is a big increase, but it's because we made that decision to accept the tax relief and to push the stormwater off for a year, which is making it a lot harder on staff. They have one through years to come into compliance, and it's a lot of work that they have to do. And, and, you know, there were some other things that people might not be aware of, but last year, no staff got any raises, and there was no, everyone accepted that, it was a hard year for everybody. So many of, this is a year that's just returning more to our level that we were at in 2020. And again, surprisingly, if we talk about in real dollars, I think it would be, that is, I understand what Dan said, that's what people really want to know. And part of the story is your actual real dollars per thousand is less than it was in 2020. Here's why 2021 was so low, we're kind of going back to where we were before, but it's actually a little less. Now, your actual bill, your total bill, property taxes, will likely go up because valuations have gone up. The city's portion of it, per thousand, has actually gone down. So I think those are all a part of the story of transparency. That is difficult to concisely and quickly get across, but, yeah.
By the way, by the way, the 792 on the stormwater fee, folks can come in and challenge that too, if they've got questions on it, there may be some that can, will be denied, it's, that won't, that it won't happen, depending on their own personal situation, because the city's not perfect on this, and I know Tater Palmer and his group have said that, and they've said this in open meetings, that, you know, if there's something that needs to be taken a look at, clearly, we will look at that. So, Maureen?
I was just following up on what Brandy said with respect to educating people, and it does seem to me that incrementally, if we can get the daily news and press release out there specifically talking about how we got to the situation we're in now, it'd be really helpful. Because I think we've got to do something to help people know where we got to and how we got there. And I'm kind of looking for Garrett, but I don't see Garrett, but there must be. But I think, you know, it's a way of getting publicity out there and letting people know that.
One more comment, it might paint me as being cold and unsympathetic, which I am not, because I pay these fees as well, but Ken pointed out that going to the restaurant is much more expensive now than it was even a couple of years ago, and everything else is going up, and the city is not immune to the influence of inflation on its operations either. And we're also subject to these same pressures, and the only way to continue to provide the services that the citizens expect in this town is to have enough revenue to support those services. And as Brandy pointed out, up there on the wall is the provision of services, and we have to be able to do that. And unfortunately, that means our costs go up, and we have to have the resources to cover it. So not to be unfeeling, but it's just the economics of the situation bearing down on us.
Okay, well, where do we want to go?
Well, I would support the increase in the water sewer garbage deposit as well.
Do you have a number?
Yep.
I think it's hard for us to do a number, because it seems to me that, Dan was talking about 135, and we were talking about 120 to 125. I guess I think that the city staff can have a pretty good estimate in terms of what that looks like. It's either 120 or 125 or 135. It seems to me that's a hard decision for us to make, more seems like you all know the number, and...
I think what you're hearing from Dan is that they'd like to see some movement on it. Right now, if you're going to pass this tonight, you're going to have to put a number on it. If you want to delay it till next meeting, you can certainly do that. It would seem to me, as I said, when we looked at it, it was in the realm of about $120, but that, again, was before the water and sewer rate increases, so, and certainly stormwater. So I would think $125 would be adequate. And we can relook at that, if we know that that's what our policy is going to be, next year, we can do the calculation and come in and have it, maybe not indexed, but have a pretty good idea where it's going to be.
If you do 125 this year, clearly, there should be in some engagement for next year's budget well in advance to say, hey, this, this is either right on, or no, this is too low, or maybe it's a little bit too much, who knows?
But the thought being that it is equivalent to the average water sewer and garbage bill.
Yeah.
So.
That should become known, discoverable.
Yeah.
And then, like some of the other things, where you've said it's been discovered that a big adjustment needs to be made, but it's been spread out a little bit, so it's not such a big...
Certainly.
...hit in one year, that could be, I would think, 120 or 125, and then...
We're at 120, aren't we?
No, we're at 100.
We're at 100.
Oh, yeah.
I think 125 is between the two numbers, and that makes me feel the most comfortable. And then if we find out that it's not right next year, we can increase it again or move it down again.
That sounds good to me. I'm not really thrilled about increasing one of our fees throughout all the input we have and all the discussion, but this, there seems to be a reason for actually covering the cost of that service, which is what we need to be, how we need to be making these decisions, so.
And making sure that the person owning the building doesn't end up getting stuck with the money.
Your honor?
Art's got the floor.
I was going to make a motion. Gina, did you want to step in? Well, I would make a motion to approve the attached FY 2022 fee resolution with the one alteration that we make the water sewage, sewer garbage deposit $125.
Second?
Okay, we've got a motion by Art, and a second by Sandra, to approve the attached FY 2022 fee resolution with the change of the deposit for water sewage and garbage to go to, from 100 to $125. Further discussion? I'll start the roll with you, Brandy.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
And Maureen.
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much, Gary.
Thank you.
Now we will move on to item number six, open container ordinance revisions for downtown events. We have Gary here as well, and we are going to have Mia here with us as well. She's been doing a lot of work on this over the last several years.
Okay, thank you. What you have before you tonight is a amendment, a proposed amendment to the city's open container law. As you know, our Moscow city code prohibits open containers of alcohol in public or on public right of way. So council has allowed certain exemptions to this, most notably in parks and in certain buildings owned by the city. We have beer gardens that have been allowed downtown, and we have a process set up for beer gardens. You've seen, we have a sidewalk cafe program as well that has been expanded in the last couple of years to deal with COVID. So it is, those are all exemptions within the open container law. And this is the next in a progression of those. I think I should probably, historically, this probably started with art walk a couple of years ago, maybe five years ago, where one of the things that people enjoy doing is they go around to the different businesses and venues, look at art, and wine is, or beer is typically served in some of these venues. So if someone looks at the art, they have a glass of wine, or they have a beer, and they have to finish it or leave it half consumed before they can leave that venue and go into another venue. So there was, I think, a, an idea that it would be nice if we could have an exemption that, within certain boundaries, we could allow open containers of beer and wine in the public right of way. So we started talking about this, and I'm sure Mayor Lambert will have some comments on it, because he's been a big advocate of having something like this to enhance the downtown experience. So what you see above you, or before you today on the screen, is what this downtown entertainment district would look like. It extends almost exactly along the north and south couplet, except it picks up D Street and Jackson Street, there are some brewery venues up here. It also extends up Sixth Street, because we have a lot of restaurants along there as well. What the idea is, is within this entertainment district, that we would treat it very similar to the way that an event in East City Park is treated. That the event would come in, and you saw this application that we've developed for it, so you had the application and the ordinance, and you have a map of the district. So what the idea is, is within this district, and part of it's set up this way because it encompasses a lot of central business, you get out into the more motor business-type businesses, then they typically have parking lots where they can, if they want to have an outside venue, they can do that. So within this entertainment district, that someone would come in, if they had an event that they wanted, say, art walk, and art walk was going to, say it was going to be from A Street down to Eighth Street or something like that, it could, council could, by resolution, allow that area to be closed down to traffic, which we have street closure going on all the time. We have activities, there was an activity just this last week downtown where the street was closed. It's, Main Street is closed every week for Farmer's Market from May until October, so on and so forth. So that's not unheard of. But within that boundary, that in order to consume alcohol in the public right of way, you would either have to have a permitted beer garden, or you could do it in a sidewalk cafe. So what this would do is it would allow council to put, number one, designate the area within the entertainment district, what would be the boundaries of this event, we'll call them, call it an event. So in that event, council would dictate a bunch of different things that you saw in the application. It would be how long, what's the duration, so on and so forth. Because there are other public rights of way abutting, or going into adjacent to the entertainment district, then anything outside of that designated area as set by council resolution, the open container ordinance would still be in effect. So if someone were to leave the venue, if you will, then they would be in violation. So, as I said, this is the size of the district. We certainly don't expect that it probably will ever occur where everything within the boundaries of the district will be closed for an event. And part of that reason is because you've still got to move traffic around, and the rights of way, their main reason, the reason they were dedicated to the public, is for transportation corridors. So we're trying to strike that balance. We've engaged a little bit, I should say more than a little bit, with the business community, those downtown businesses, to make sure that they, this is a workable solution for them as well. So with that, certainly Mia can answer any questions, I'll try to do whatever I can. But this is what's before the city council, and it does require an ordinance change, which is what you have in your packet.
And?
Approved, and how, who is going to be dispensing beer and wine in that area? Additionally, where they can go, that this is intended that the public would still have access to downtown, not by vehicle, but they would be able to walk downtown. So, yes, it's not Bourbon Street, it isn't 24/7 alcohol, it is only during the event. There will also have to be, as we, council states in the East City Park rendezvous event, they get their private security now, but council has the option of saying, okay, based on the nature of the event, you may need to have police officers there. So they would, whoever putting the event on, then would have to reimburse the city for the, the costs of those officers. So everything is intended to have a very well-choreographed event with a starting time and ending time, and there's always the opportunity that if something gets out of hand, the event can be terminated. So we've not had anything like that, that we've had to do that, so that's a good thing. But yes, you're exactly right, it's very well documented in the application and the resolution, and there will be a separate resolution prepared for every event that's approved. So that will come to you in a public meeting, you'll review it, just like every year you do in rendezvous, and there have been discussions about, can't we do this administratively? And the answer has always been, no, that's a public park, we want to make sure that the event is something that would be appropriate for a public park. We do have some processes for beer gardens that are administrative in nature, but this isn't a beer garden, this is actually a district. So we wanted to make sure that we treated it the same way that we did... So we wanted to make sure that we treated it the same way that we did the city park situation.
Okay, let's get some public comment. Okay, if you would like to come up and give us your name, I'll give you three minutes. Tell us what's on your mind, what you think about this whole idea. I take any and all comments, by the way.
Good evening, Mayor Lambert and City Council. I'm sorry. My name is Samantha Martnett, 411 South Main Street, Moscow, Idaho. I'm the executive director for the Moscow Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. And over the last weeks, there have been a lot of discussions about the entertainment district with business owners who are located in and outside of the downtown corridor. And there's broad enthusiasm across the board, everybody's very excited about this. The vibrancy of Moscow's downtown has long been Moscow's calling card, and we all agree that it's one of our most cherished features, and we believe that the entertainment district will reinforce and enhance this vibrancy. So we appreciate the mayor and city council taking a creative, forward-looking approach in cultivating Moscow's magic downtown.
Thank you, Samantha. Come on up, don't be bashful.
Good evening, Stefan Yatsi, 864 Harold Street, owner of Pour Company. I just want to reiterate what probably you're going to hear over and over and over. I think it's a great move. I think we're going to have a lot of great events coming downtown. We're going to bring in a lot of people from outside of Moscow to these events, so I won't take three minutes to tell you it's a good move.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is George Scandalous. I'm a Moscow resident and a local business owner. I got to tell you guys, you're killing it this last year. So this is a really good move. You know, you guys have made very good decisions all along, safeguarded the public health in this last year. I know that was a difficult decision for you guys, and to keep everybody safe in town, and I think that making this decision now to basically amplify what we do so well in this town and be able to have great events come to town is, is amazing. This, like Sam mentioned and Stefan mentioned, this is going to be something that will be really well received by the business community, but as well as the, the surrounding area at large, because what makes Moscow special is its downtown core, and being able to create more events and keep events downtown and create that family atmosphere where people feel safe and can do these kinds of things, it is going to be really great for the community. So thank you very much for doing this, thank you for having the courage to make the awesome decisions that you've made this last year. You guys are a crush in it.
Thank you, George.
So my name is Alan Espenshade, resident of 1043 Alcohen here in Moscow, and I was absolutely suckered into coming here tonight. Moscow has a vibrant downtown community, and it's a lot of fun to just get out and about. And there's a core community fiber, George, Stefan, Kevin, whoever, all these folks. That would be so much fun, to be able to invite people from out of our community to come in and see what Moscow's all about. Camaraderie, community, a good time. No one's going to get, no one's going to get feisty, it's just going to be a lot of fun. And for the local businesses, for people to be able to come in. And I tell you what, if you pass this, we have something really fun planned. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Chloe Rambo of the Moscow Food Co-op at 121 East Fifth Street. I'm here to be an additional echo for this fabulous group of people. We appreciate your time considering this matter. We're totally psyched about it. I mean, it's going to be great. We also just want to echo that this is an opportunity to bring the community together in such a way that we've taken it on the chin in so many ways over this past year. And while we appreciate all your support, this is one more way the community has a real thirst for community events. Terrible pun, sort of intended, but we do appreciate your time in thinking about this, and it's going to be really appreciated for the downtown community as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chloe.
Dan Chonberg, owner of Palouse Properties, and live on Cameron Road outside of Moscow. This reminds me, Gary, of some of the days we talked about the open container in parking lots at the Kibbe Dome for events and activities to bring community. I, I think this is a really good thing for the downtown. I am in total support of it. I just want to mention one cautionary note. We've had some events downtown this year where our private parking lot gets cut off and we can't get into, and we're still open for business. We're right at the corner of Second and Washington, and our parking lot is 25 feet inside of the, the Second Street. So as you're, as they're looking at permits, I would hope that they would look at those situations, especially when we're still open. I, I was coming back from showings and couldn't even get into the office with clients who had cars parked inside, and then they had to try to get out after barricades were placed there. And I think we, we still want to keep that flow going, we still want to keep the streets going and allow businesses to do what they need to do. But I see this, you know, for Art Walk, for other events and activities, I see this as a very, very good thing for downtown.
Anybody else like to come up and talk? Okay, I'll turn it over to council. Art?
I had one kind of a procedural question. I was going through the application as if I were a event coordinator planning this thing, and I came down to a couple of items. Number four on the application, are you requesting a street closure for the event? Yes, no? And it says, if yes, they just want to know where it's closed. Well, as part of a street closure, I would assume there would also be get the cars out of there aspect. Then you move down to number five, and it says, do you require parking restrictions for the event? And it seems kind of redone it. Could you maybe fill me out, what's the difference between those two questions?
I can turn that over to Tyler, since those street regulations I was not a party to.
Come on up, Tyler. I'm glad you got a chance to speak tonight.
We know you were waiting.
I just, I don't know what I would have done if I hadn't got to say something. Mayor, council, thanks for your time. Yeah, Art, we, we can have different events that will have different requirements. So you may have an event, for example, an event that closes the street that obviously, the Streets Department takes control of any traffic control in the downtown core. So we don't allow for private entities to do the traffic control. So when these are submitted, we go in, we do the traffic control, we know how to employ the plans for every single block downtown. And so if there's a request that closes a block, we'll close the block, we'll put out the park boards in advance, remove the traffic. But you could have an event that requests some parking modifications without closing the street. So you could have something that wants to take X number of parking spaces because they're going to have a food cart that faces the sidewalk or some such thing that they, they could require, they could request parking restrictions that don't require a full closure of the road.
Yeah, I was thinking about it the other way around, but thank you for the clarification.
I would also point out to the council that each of these events stands on its own. So it's an individual event. When the application is brought to the council, council has the discretion whether to approve it or not to approve it. If they believe that it's an event that would not be appropriate for closing the street and use of the, the district, then council could deny the application. So.
So this will only come to the council if they're requesting the beverage portion of it, correct?
Yes, exactly.
So, because typically, the closures don't come to council.
Exactly.
Okay.
No, this, the downtown district, the open container is why it's similar to East City Park. So it would come to you in a resolution, so you would be able to dictate if there are special things about the event that you wanted. We talked about controlling access ingress and egress into the venue. So hopefully, it'll be something where people will respect signs and that sort of thing. You'll also see in the, in the proposed resolution that someone needs to make sure that they're checking ID and give a band or something so that the police or security or whoever is down there is to be sure that we're complying with the state law of drinking age as well.
Well, each one of them should have resolutions, should be coming in front of council for that very reason you just said. Sandra?
I just wanted to just share a couple things. A, I love this idea, absolutely. We did take it on the chin, this is a really nice way to, to move forward. I think it is solid for our community. That said, I know there's some folks out there that are like, I don't see how it's going to be family-friendly if there are a bunch of people wandering around beer and wine. And I just want to say to that, I think it actually does help because if you're in a beer garden, that is small, or even if it's big, you are still away from your children or your neighbor's kids or whatever person under 18, 21, sorry, you might be around. Right? So yeah, just wipe that part out. But, but it, it can be family-friendly, and I understand concerns about we, everyone's wandering around, getting drunk on the streets. Well, no, this keeps families together, it allows families to enjoy the whole thing together. And you're not split up, and you're not having to say, okay, honey, if you want a beer, you go there, I'll take the kids and go here, and then switch back and forth, right? You're all together, enjoying our community as one, as, as I think it should be, and I am, I'm very much hoping this passes. I'm looking forward to it. I appreciate the fact that it does come for every single event, because there may be some that, that aren't appropriate, right? And I'm glad we get that opportunity. But I'm really glad we have the opportunity and the, the focus to move forward with this. I think it can only help our town, and I really do think it can unite everybody, not just the drinkers out there, but the families that like to enjoy the downtown district together.
I, I'm kind of looking forward to seeing what the plans you all have, because I'm really excited about it. I will also say that two weeks ago, I had 60 people, most of whom have never been in Moscow before in their lives, and they were so impressed. Oh, I always thought it's just a little hick town, here we go, we're going to go to Moscow. And they were like, I, they fell in love with it. And I just think this is something else that we can do to enhance it. And I think that that is a fabulous thing, and I love having everybody come to Moscow and loving it, enjoying it, and it being open to everybody.
Art?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance creating the entertainment district and including the entertainment district as an additional exemption to the open container prohibition under suspension of the rules, requiring three complete and separate readings and it be read by title and published by summary.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion by Art and a second by Sandra to approve the ordinance creating the entertainment district and including the entertainment district as an additional exemption to the open container prohibition under suspension of the rules, requiring three complete and separate readings and it be read by title and published by summary. I'll start to roll with Brandy.
Aye.
Art?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Sandra?
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
And Maureen?
Aye.
Hooray! I'll read this, we got an entertainment district. We have ordinance number 2021-11, an ordinance of the city of Moscow, Idaho, municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the amendment of Moscow city code Title IX, Chapter Six and Eight, and Title X, Chapter One, providing for the inclusion of additional exemption to the open container prohibition, providing for the permission of this ordinance to be deemed severable, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. So there you have it, ladies and gentlemen, we do have an entertainment district. Yahoo, folks!
Yahoo, nice!
But now, we're going to move on to item number seven, American Rescue Plan National Endowment for the Arts Grant, and we have with us Megan Sherry tonight. Hello, Megan.
Good evening. I'm glad everybody's in a good mood now, so we can talk about grants. I'll be brief, because I know everybody's looking forward to going home. This evening, it's an honor to bring to you a request for direction on a grant application. The exciting news about this is it's the largest grant that the Arts Department has ever approached in the department's history, to my knowledge. Did a little digging through the department records today, just to confirm that. And this will also, if council directs us to complete this application, it will be the first application directly to the National Endowment for the Arts. A lot of the grant applications or the grant proposals we've put forward to date have been through the Idaho Commission on the Arts or the Idaho Humanities Council. This particular program is part of the American Rescue Plan, and it is being administered by the National Endowment for the Arts. It provides operational support for arts organizations. They intend to make up to 800 awards nationwide. The program specifically calls out $50,000, $100,000, and $150,000 as the award amount. They will not adjust the, the award amount based on, upon the, the application. Those are the fixed amounts. And what's really unique about this program, particularly in the arts, I would say, is that the intent is to support operational costs like rent, salaries, artist fees, ordinary costs of operation for organizations that provide art for underserved populations, have small and medium budgets, are located in rural opportunities, this should start to sound sort of familiar at this point, and, and importantly, they, they do open the door to organizations that have not applied for NEA support before. So in looking at the program description, it seems like Moscow's a really great fit for this. The criteria include that the proposal must support the, the mission, that's fairly standard, that the organization has the ability to manage funds, we obviously have that, that the proposal has a positive impact on the workforce. I think this is important because the NEA is really intending to keep arts workers and arts organizations in place. This is a field that's been hit really hard with venue closures, layoffs, a lot of, a lot of my friends in the arts have been out of work as a result of COVID, and so that's the, that's the intent of this particular program. And then also, there's, a, a part of the criteria is that they're looking to support those who have a limited experience of the arts based on ethnicity, disability, economic disadvantage, or geography, which Moscow ticks a lot of those boxes as well. One thing I wanted to mention as an example about being disadvantaged due to geography is a friend of mine talks about when they were studying art in, in elementary school, if they were looking at a particular painting, they would just, she grew up in New York, so they would just go to the Met and look at it. Right? So I was in my 30s by the time I got to see that stuff. In any case, that's what they mean by geographic disability is the wrong, but disadvantage geographically. We are privileged to have a really rich arts and culture environment, it's about to get richer, and a fun downtown party, but there, the, the truth of the matter is, we are disconnected in this area from the, the core of the arts canon. And so the Moscow Arts Department really aligns with the goals of this program because it's, it's one of the oldest and most comprehensive municipal arts programs in the state of Idaho. And it's something that I don't get tired of talking about, maybe you guys get tired of hearing me say it, but I think it's really important to say that over and over. This is a really, really unique program. And so the strength and the history of the program is really, at this point, it's poised to have even greater financial health and balance by taking advantage of programs like this that are offered to departments like ours that, that provide great service to the community. And the NEA recognizes the strength and the value of municipal arts organizations. They understand that organizations like this provide a really strong foundation for other organizations to, to thrive. And so the, the request, the proposal we put forward is for, to request $100,000, and this, this funding would support the FY 22 Temporary Collection Artist Honoria, that means all of the, the artist contracts that we create for the temporary collection would be supported by these funds in FY 22. And exhibitions and collections support to evaluate approaches to maintaining our public art collection, primarily, that's, that would be the real big focus of that, that area of funding. There's a 35-year-old public art collection in this, in this community, it's 140 pieces today, and it's about to grow because we've got Palouse It's 140 pieces today, and it's about to grow because we've got Palouse Planaire coming up, and we always collect a new piece or two. So this is a, a collection that is in need of, of maintenance and some focused practices there. And then finally, the third component is that, that this funding would offset the existing administrative specialist salary from April 1, 2022 to September 30, 2023. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Megan?
I think a big approach is the sustainability. I mean, when you get that kind of funds and you get to do work on it, it's also just the idea of how do we sustain that in a way that's ongoing? And I see your issue as project on how we're gonna take care of our 140 pieces that we currently have, but I also think, thinking about long-term, how do we sustain that?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. I think what we're starting with is we've, we have a public art maintenance plan that, that everybody here saw this year. And now the, the grand goal is how do we, how do we implement that, that maintenance plan in a way that streamlines, that takes, that ticks all the boxes, that takes care of all of the pieces so that we don't have a bigger problem down the road, taking care of things.
Well, I personally am just excited and hope that we get it. Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? We heard this at the Administrative Committee, and I wish you good luck with it, and I think your plan for how to use it, that supports the, what the regulations of how it can be used is excellent, and I would move to approve staff to submit a grant application under the American Rescue Plan Act through the National Endowment for the Arts for an amount not to exceed $100,000.
I second. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Brandy and a second by Marine to approve the staff to submit a grant application of the American Rescue Plan Act through the National Endowment for the Arts for an amount not to exceed $100,000. And I'll start the roll with you, Marine.
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
And Brandy?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. That's the end of our meeting, so we'll go into reports. Art, do you have any reports for us?
Yeah, I do. The volunteer fire department had a meeting and went round and round with some more lexipol, which is a legal review document to make sure that the department is within the standards of legality as their operations and procedures are, and they're working through definitions on that thing still. It was a rather truncated and short meeting because most people were out of town and they're looking forward to more wrangling after everybody's back here next month.
Fighting fires and different things?
Oh, well, they're busy with that, so things going up. They were up on Moscow Mountain, they were down in Linnor, they've been all over the place, so they're getting good practice, not within the city, but getting good practice for other people. The Farmers Market Commission met, and things are going very, very well there as the market gets back up to its traditional speed with entertainment downtown. Had some issues of how exactly to judge what is local and not local when it becomes an ingredient, especially in slightly out-of-season ingredient, for example, making cider. Do you have enough apples on your ranch, or do you have to bring a few in from outside? Anyway, it is quite the involved discussion. They also went out and have completed the essentially palette for the market, and they've got a whole bunch of nifty new designs that go into the farmer's market. You'll be seeing those around, pasted on the little red wagons, T-shirts, things like that. So they've got a design palette out now that's looking really good to refresh everything. And one more item, I don't want to steal any of your thunder, Mr. Mayor, but at the Mayor's Golf Tournament, we had our honest politicians golf team consisting of Jen, Gina, myself, and one other, and we were the honest politicians because we got the award for the worst team at the Mayor's Golf Tournament. It says, it says on there, better putts next time. We were 12 over par in a best ball competition, the winners were 15 under. There was a 27-point stroke difference there, but we had a good time anyway, and it was good. And so the trophy is gonna go to Jen up on her desk. You're welcome.
All right, the Arts Commission met and received the final report from the outgoing Moscow poet laureate, Susan Hodgson, and she had a lot of great things to say about her prodigious time as being the Moscow poet laureate. There was also, the commission is working on, they've been working on a palm card flyer type of card that, just for citizens to know what is going on in the arts community, how to access things. And the discussion was the other side providing brainstorming ways of how people can engage with or support the arts across the board. So that is something that they're working on. Also, a presentation from one of the, the subcommittee group that has been working on the Third Street Gallery schedule for all of 2022, that's completed. Really, really great exhibits that are coming up, very fun and diverse things that we will be seeing in 2022 right up here in the Third Street Gallery. And that pretty much covers the Arts Commission. Parks and Rec is having their strategic planning workshop this Thursday, so that's gonna be a big one, and I'll have something to report on that next time around.
Sandra?
Pathways Commission, they have set September 14th as their tour around town day, and a couple sort of new features to this. One, I think they're working with staff to try to set it up to where they can submit some of their favorite photos of themselves on the pathways to try and generate. I'm getting a smile from Jen, I'm thinking this might, okay, so we're good. I'm like, I hope they talk to you about this. Okay, so we'll have the opportunity as, as the public here to send in photos to the city, I don't know what social media sites it might go out on, but just great shots of you riding your bike whether around town or hopefully on the pathways, but to generate interest, and then the annual bike ride September 14th. They went on a lot of different ideas. I'm almost positive, but not completely positive, that they're starting at East City Park at 5:15. And we'll ride around town and eventually go under the little underpass near White and up to Berman Creekside Park. Those that want to go a little bit farther to look at what the future holds for us in pathways, and hopefully getting to the other side by the University of Idaho, people are welcome to do that. Meeting at 5:15, so if you work till 5, take your bike to work if you don't ride it to work, so you can just quick get to East City Park and jump on your bike and go with the Pathways Commission. They do a great job of stopping at all the different sites, so it's not just gonna be a, a bike around town. Like you might bike to Heron's Hideout or the Third Street Bridge, and they'll stop and talk about it so you can rest, catch up if you need to. Maybe you don't need to do that, but some might need to, and you'll also learn some pretty cool things about the city of Moscow along the way. So I hope folks can take advantage of that.
Thank you, Sandra. Gina?
Okay, Fair and Affordable Housing, they had held a Zoom meeting again, and the big action item from that meeting, they were discussing some of the, still the surveys and the questions within it, but one question they did ask was whether or not the Fair and Affordable Housing Commission will be involved in the decisions when allotting the dollars from the affordable housing budget item. So just, just, we're talking about that. We also had a fairly lengthy presentation from the Citizens Action Group regarding climate change and the discussion of climate change and, and housing. So we didn't really do a lot of housing issues, more we were talking climate change. Planning and zoning met, and I was covering for Sandra, who was covering for Marine. And I will tell you, those guys get stuff done. There was a series of one, two, three, four, five, five public hearings, and the meeting was done in an hour. The, it was for the Southgate Third Edition, and they were talking about the rezone, and then we did a preliminary subdivision plat, and then we did all kinds of stuff all the way to the end. But there is a lot going on, a lot going on, and there's a lot of rezones and plats and preliminary whatnots going on in there, and, and those guys got it done in an hour. And then I was triple booked on the night of the Transportation Commission, but I did get the meeting minutes for you so that we could share what went on. There were, I believe, in fact, the exact same subdivisions that were talked about in the planning and zoning, they were also looking at the transportation issues within each one of them. And so there were five, five different moments of trying to look at that and see how it would be, how it would affect flow in our community. There was also a subcommittee meeting that occurred as part of the Transportation Committee that I, our commission that I was part of regarding intercity transit, and that means Pullman and Moscow intercity. And we've just scratched the surface, there is very little actually rolling yet, but we're talking about cover letters, survey monkey polls, we're gonna identify who the, the stakeholders could potentially be in that process, and then see if it would fit within the city's survey as well, and, and then we need to talk to Pullman and then Pullman Transportation, and there's, there were far more action items than there were people to do them. They also introduced the new Commissioner Scott Sumner that you appointed at the last council meeting, and I'm just super excited about him being on it because he does have some, a passion for this kind of stuff. That's all.
And I was covered.
Oh, you were covered, okay.
But I never thought that meeting got done with that many issues in one hour, so I'm impressed.
Okay, with that, and Art had talked about, a little bit about the Mayor's Golf Tournament, which was August the 13th on a smoky day, but we all made it through it. 25 teams, we had sponsor, full slate of sponsorships. And what we do with these golf tournaments, ladies and gentlemen, they go to a nonprofit organization that funds the monies that we earn, what we'll end up netting, we'll go to the Moscow Food Bank here for some kind of presentation probably in September, I'm guessing. But anyway, Parks and Rec did a wonderful job, Amanda Argon as well, so under Jen Piffner's leadership, and that team, that was very good. And by the way, Art, even though you got the last place team, everybody was a winner out there.
It was fun.
It was fun, it was a good time, and everybody has a good time ribbing each other, and it's always kind of an exciting thing. And it's, the whole idea behind it is let people let their hair down a little bit, enjoy their day, and do something for our community, it just strengthens our community when we already do that. So with that, Gary, do you have any reports, sir?
The only report I have is one week from tomorrow at 4 o'clock PM at the Hamilton Low Aquatic Center is our annual employee appreciation picnic, so hope to see everybody there.
Very nice. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? We are adjourned to 8:48, ladies and gentlemen.